I'm sorry, can't hear you.
Oh.
Oh.
I think you're on.
You are.
Thank you.
I was trying to.
For a place.
You guys.
He said.
He's been on.
For that.
Well, no, she would come back.
Alone.
Put them on.
Thanks.
Good day.
Make sure you guys all have your.
I mean.
I'll be there.
Let me let him say.
We might go.
It's.
Yeah.
Don't you.
No.
I'm trying to silence my.
I think.
Yeah.
I'm here.
I know.
I'm gonna see some of the families.
There's got some.
I was sharing.
I'd be huge outside.
Those are.
What are you wearing glasses for?
Okay. You should do that. Oh, those are. I'm sorry.
I had.
It's your brother.
You.
Ah, right.
I explained.
They're all around.
The meat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The song.
I was.
So.
Probably not.
Very.
We're.
Well.
That's.
Your car.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
The glory of your.
It's just. Wow, where are you?
Yeah.
Needers.
Yes.
Well, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, all right.
Yes.
Please.
Oh, yeah.
We got.
Yeah.
What was it?
What was it?
What was it?
Two hours.
One.
Yeah.
Uh.
Say, I'm afraid we have anybody.
No, who was it?
Okay.
We have to die.
And she goes.
Oh, he is.
He's not.
No.
Well, five.
Well.
I've got the.
I've got a green screen here.
So I want.
You can do this.
About to get.
Guys.
Yeah.
I don't know.
In my. Well. That's good. I mean, I hope I never shut. But I told her. And she goes, I hate nobody to pay for most of all this paper. That's good.
I'm like.
It's.
Oh, that's.
My.
Yeah, how you doing?
So.
One.
Sixty two hundred.
No, sixty one hundred.
I'm still.
Just like.
I don't know what you mean.
Hi, Rose. How are you? Load your bike here? Over the whole time. Sure.
It's me.
It's okay.
That's.
Is it?
I still go through.
Everybody.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And I.
We're gonna be here at minimum about thirty two.
Just like.
November.
It's.
Coming.
Okay.
At least on the right.
It's.
So.
I'm sure.
Council members, please, time. We be seated.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ready?
Oh, I'm good. Ready to go.
Councilwoman. This is Councilman. Sorry, Cal.
How about Councilperson? You were.
Councilperson.
Yeah.
By twenty three.
And.
I'm just. I was thinking kind of thing about thirty seconds away. And we'll go ahead and turn our meeting.
Looking great already with more people around today.
I'm gonna pause for our beautiful. I was just off the record for you guys. You let me in the meeting, uh, Madam. clerk?
Yeah. Great.
You see me?
Do you mean?
I said, well.
I know.
That was.
No, man.
I didn't know that we had that.
No. I'm hanging in.
I'm gonna cut my.
I was like.
He was.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll go ahead and get started. Can you? All, please turn on your mic.
Recording in progress.
Great. Uh, thank you all for being here today. Uh, today is the rec. Today is July twenty third, twenty twenty four, for the regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Uh, the to begin at six oh four P M. Madam clerk, can you please take roll call?
Hassan Ahmad.
Present.
Moe B. Dune.
Here.
Nancy Breyer. Here. Robert Coniston.
Here.
Denise Malanowski Maxwell. Here. Hassan Saab.
Here.
Tom Winsell.
Here.
Mister Terry Abicore.
Thank you. Uh. Madam clerk, I'm going to ask us all to rise for the pledge of allegiance. We're gonna have our firefighter, president of the union, Phil Hall, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. He will be the advocate of the United States of America. And he is the republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Phil. Next up, we have city council resident recognition by our honorable Councilman Ahmad, which I will join him.
Look at sir, mom. But thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Today, it's my privilege to stand before you to recognize a business that has been a cornerstone of our community for four, for over four decades. V I P Car Wash, founded in nineteen eighty by George Abu Sawan, and now co-owned by his son, Paul Abu Sawan, has not only been a fixture in Dearborn Heights, but has also been, become synonymous with dedication, service, and community spirit. Since its inception, V I P Car Wash has diligently served the residents of Dearborn Heights, ensuring their vehicles are maintained to the highest standards. Their commitment to excellence has extended beyond individual customers to encompass our own very, our very own police and city vehicles. As service they performed faithfully for decades. Beyond their professional contribution, George and Paul have embodied the true spirit of community stewardship. Through their business, they have supported numerous charitable initiatives, including the annual Toys for Tots campaign, which has brought joy to countless children during the holiday season. Moreover, Paul Abu Sawan's commitment to public service extends even further. As a dedicated member of the county sheriff reserve, he selfishly dedicate his time and skills to ensuring the safety and well-being of the community. Today, as we commend V I P Car Wash for their outstanding contributions and mark their enduring legacy in our city, let us also recognize Abu Sawan's family and wavering commitment to making Dearborn Heights a better place for all who live here. Please join me in congratulating George and Paul Abu Sawans on their achievements, thanking them for their service, and wishing Paul a belated happy birthday. Their impact serves as a shining example of community leadership and generosity. Please, if you can join us.
You want to, George? I mean, but. Oh. This is to you and your father. Thank you for the many years of services with our city and continued service in our city.
Congratulations, Greg.
Well. You wanna go in?
Well, get. And then. Councilman, you guys can join if you don't wanna be in the photo.
Yeah. 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 There you go. Yeah. There you go.
Hold on. Work.
Would be fit here?
Sure. So I get the smelling of your nails. Make out. Things nice.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll be back tomorrow, make sure. Hang up. I can. None.
All right, yes. Thank you. He just heard. Way more than.
I want to. Pretty sure. The environment.
I'm sorry.
Oh, and George. Besides their commitment to, uh, the community providing a service of vehicle, vehicle maintenance, these two guys up here, anytime I've come to them for a sponsorship, for any activity that we're putting on in the city, it's without a doubt, yes, don't even bother asking me anymore. Just put me down and come pick up the check. And these guys are the best, right?
Just few words from Paul, please.
Uh, on behalf of me and my family, thank you, guys. It's very reassuring that, you know, we get this award and that we're appreciated. But also, thank you. It's a pleasure to be part of the city. It's an honor to serve the city. We believe in the city. The city is great, and we look forward to the future. Uh. I, I heard, uh, Tom one, one time mentioned about veterans discount. We offer veterans discount. Uh, not many people know this, but all city employees do get a discount. Just mention it at the cashier. It's, it, it's our pleasure. Uh. And we.
How about your wife's residence? Come on.
To be on a business.
I got a.
I got a water bill up here.
That's you wanna exempt the water.
Water bill.
Hey.
We can take care of that.
Enough.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Great honor. Take care.
You look good.
I look sharp. I look good. You're married tonight.
You're?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, moving on. Today, also would like to recognize an exemplary young individual whose selfishness and quick action have made a profound impact on our community. Bahah Salih, at just eighteen years old, demonstrated exceptional bravery and compassion when he rushed to the aid of, of an elderly man who collapsed during Friday prayers. Bahah's swift response and unwavering commitment to helping others exemplify the values we hold dear in our community. His dedication extend beyond this courageous act. Bahah has also played a significant role in the cancer club at his high school, showing a deep-seated compassion for those in need and a commitment to making a positive difference. It is with great honor and gratitude that we present Bahah Salih, Bahah Salih with this hero service award. Through his actions, Bahah has not only saved a life, but also inspired us all to be more attentive, caring, and proactive members of our community. May his example continue to resonate and encourage others to follow in his footsteps. Please join me in congratulation Bahah for his extraordinary courage and compassionate spirit.
You need to do. Some states and states. I was just enough.
You know, I, I, I will tell you guys, I'm not sure if many of you guys are familiar with what happened. An elderly man was in the middle of, uh, congregating in Friday prayer, were praying at Friday prayer, and, uh, he collapsed while he was having a heart attack. And many people didn't realize, because they were in prayer, didn't realize he collapsed. It was Bahah that jumped to the scene and said, call nine one one, call for an emergency. There happened to be a doctor there, automatically did CPR, and they were able to save this man's life. Uh, but it was Bahah that jumped up right away, eighteen years old, and so congratulations. You guys gonna do it, Bahah, in the photo? Firefighter, you guys are more than welcome. This is, I mean, this is the city right here. It's public service.
Yeah.
You're putting your words on. You guys.
Yep. Come on, get in there. Get in there. That's Tom. You don't wanna get in there?
I'm in it.
You're.
I think. I'm in it.
Yeah.
Steen on my pants.
Here we go. My shirt.
I'm just.
The clerk's security officer.
Paul in stature.
Say cheese, guys. Say Moe B. Dunn.
Say. Now. Love to say something. I love to say that.
She makes. Having trouble? No.
Yeah. Few words. Or no? Thank.
Yeah, few words, uh, from Bahah. Please go on.
Uh, thank you so much for the award, everybody. Uh, I really appreciate it. Um, I love the city and, uh, our councilman and our mayor and everybody. Thank you so much. And, uh, I look for the future living in the city. And maybe one day, working with one of you guys in the future, Inshallah, see how it goes. Thank you so much again for this amazing work.
Wow, a lot of, uh, great vibes in here today. I love it. Great vibes. Next up on here, we have the, before we move forward, before we do this agenda approval, um, you know, I'm sure many of you have heard, we've had a tragic loss, two tragic losses in our community just most recently. Uh, our beloved sister, Dr. Ghada Mustafa, who was traveling home after doing her Pilates workout on Michigan Avenue, was struck by a, uh, by a vehicle going at about a hundred miles per hour, which, uh, you know, they announced her dead. And then we also lost our, our, our brother and our man of service, Officer Muhammad Zayed, uh, by a murderer. And, and we have lost this community this morning, and so I would like to give a full moment of silence with prayers uh, to the beloved, uh, those who have passed us to both Doctor, uh, Doctor Ghada and Officer Muhammad Zayed. Please. Thank you, guys.
Council chair, I think you missed, uh, Adam Awada too, is a nineteen-year-old, uh, passed to last week. He was the president of, um, his class in Porton High School, I think. For sickness.
And, you know.
Very bright man.
Very bright young man as well. And, you know, I, I, I bring this up before we start our meeting. Uh, just remember, guys, that, you know, the speeding is not gonna get you much further. You know, and it's, it could definitely take away somebody's life. Uh, and always remember our first responders, our police, our fire, our paramedics. Uh, know that here in the city, the community, we love you guys, we support you guys. And, you know, you know, doing the job as a police officer or firefighter, it's not easy. A very, very hard job, and, and I thank our firefighters, I thank our police officers. And, uh, let's just make sure that we do what's best to continue to support them and to protect them as they're protecting us. Thank you, guys, so much. Next up, we have the agenda approval.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
Moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the agenda for the regular meeting of July twenty third, twenty four, submitted with the removal of the following. Item nine B, received, known and filed, twenty twenty three, twenty two, twenty twenty six, Dearborn Heights Public Employee Association, T P O M A, T P O A M, collective bargaining agreement. Items thirteen C, temporary food truck, license, cart, uh, renewal application, A one, hot dogs and burgers.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up on the agenda is approval of the minutes, minutes of the regular meeting of July ninth, twenty twenty four.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
I moved the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the regular meeting of July ninth, two thousand twenty four, submitted.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is public hearings and, on com. Public hearings and comments on agenda items only. This is strictly on agenda items only. This is not public comments. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. Anybody? Anybody on Zoom? Seeing none, move on. Next up is fund transfers and current claims.
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
I moved the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the current claims in A C H wire transfers, one, one, six through one, that through six dash fifty seven is submitted.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Breyer. Any discussion? I, uh. Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up is consideration of bids. Parks and Recreation Director Sour, bid award, Canfield Center, marquee, sign.
Council chair.
Councilwoman. Breyer.
I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for the Canfield Center Central Park Marquee Sign to Lead Lion in the amount of sixty three thousand seventy five dollars. Funds for this project are from the Wayne County Park Millage, twenty twenty one, twenty two, the amount of forty four thousand six hundred and twenty four dollars, with the balance to be paid out of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five recreation budget. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract for the installation. Controller and treasurer to issue payment is outlined in seven A.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Breyer, seconded by Councilman Winsell. Any discussion on this?
Council chair.
Councilman Saab.
Um, I brought this up before. Can we put the sign at another facility in the city? So on Canfield, sound like a city hall or. Where it's more visible to people?
Director.
Hi. Um, basically, it's at the Canfield Community Center because that's the sign we need to replace, and that's the main hub for the Parks and Recreation Department to advertise our programs.
Well, I, I just want you guys to know, Councilman, if that's okay with you. I've had a conversation with Director Sour. She told me she's lost a lot of sleep over this.
Yeah.
And it's more so that we are gonna lose the money if this is not approved. Uh, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to, uh, this money was provided to us by Commissioner Kneecik.
Yeah, and, um, well, it's from the Wayne County Millage money. Um, and then the other big thing about it is it was approved by the previous council. Um, so we do have a resolution stating that. We also have contracts with Wayne County in regards to that project. Um, so basically, um, I really, there, there's a lot of gray areas in this, but the, the big question is, um, or the big thing is that we're gonna lose the funding, and I don't wanna do that. I've been placing a lot of money in my budget in a lot of different areas, all of the parks, um, going by priority, and we really do need to have a marquee. It really just looks very bad, the marquee that we have at the Canfield Center, and I don't believe that it presents a good, um, impression for our city, being it is one of our city buildings.
Thank you.
Council chair.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd like to add that with the money that's being, uh, sent, that come to us from elsewhere, that we're only paying eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty one dollars. These signs run over forty thousand dollars anywhere.
Yeah, and, and I did look at the prices for the other marquees at Eaton and Berwin Center, and they both were around the same price. So, um, this bid is really good bid, and the next one up, as you can see from the bid sheet, um, is over a hundred thousand dollars. So.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Council chair.
Yes, sir, Councilman Winsell.
Just to let everyone know, the, the building that the sign is front of, that is the Parks and Recreation Headquarters.
Correct. That is the Parks and Recreation Headquarters, and that's how we advertise our programs. Um, it was brought up last time to use social media. We do use social media a lot. It's just, you know, you have a sign out front. Beach Daily is a very well-traveled road, and, um, you know, it just looks really, really bad. The light doesn't work on it. We can't get letters for it anymore. Um, I think that our image should be, you know, important to us. So, anyhow, I brought it back a third time, um, not regarding my image. Basically, it's a little embarrassing, so I'm gonna be honest with you.
My question was, can we put it somewhere else instead of Canfield?
No, because that's the one, um, we are replacing, and we are using the poles. So we are using part of it, and that's why the cost is, is less than what it would be. We're, we're not redoing the whole entire sign.
I just wanna make sure that they're pulling permits also to put up that sign.
They are.
So we're pulling an electric permit and everything, so.
Okay. That's all in the specs.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those oppose?
No.
Madam clerk, please take roll call.
Tom Winsell.
Yes.
Hassan Ahmad.
Yes.
Hassan Saab.
No.
Moe B. Dune.
Yes.
Denise Malanowski Maxwell.
Yes.
Nancy Breyer.
Yes.
Robert Coniston.
No. All right.
There's.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now I can sleep tonight.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is Police Chief Swol, bid award for towing services.
Council chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for towing services to J and T Towing, Inc. As the most qualified bidder and authorized the controller to return any bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor and controller, or clerk, to sign the necessary warrants. Further, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign a three-year contract on behalf of the city with the optional extension of two, one-year option. Two or one-year options pending review by Corporation Council as outlined in seven dash B.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion on this?
Council chair.
Councilman.
So the pending review by Corporation Council is for the one right now or, or the renewal? Or the extension?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, response to your question, I always leave way for Corporation Council to be able to review whenever we sign an extension, whether it's the base contract of three years or the two one-year option. So we always wanna make sure, uh, Corporation Council has the ability to notice or see anything that might have changed over time, and then also to advise you as well if, if something changes and it's material.
Thank you very much. This is basically just pending the extension, the quick good extension, that, uh, the one, this one's already done, correct?
No, no, Councilman. It's, so we have nothing right now.
So, I mean, did he review it? Did you review it or?
The idea would. The. I beg your pardon. I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
No, go ahead.
So the idea, sir, is for, uh, the esteemed body to take a look at the, uh, take a look at the contract overall, if you approve it. Corporation Council, uh, would then take a final review before we sign off on the dotted line. But from what we see, from everything I've spoken with him and worked with him throughout the project, as well as our purchasing agent, um, throughout the controller's office, we believe we're in line with everything that we would need right now.
All right, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council chair, I have. There you find.
Yes. Uh, Councilman Saab.
Are contracts usually ran out on all contracts that go through the police department on three-year terms?
We have very few contracts going through the police department. We're in the process right now of renewing or authoring all of them. Uh, this is one of the first ones that we've been able to do. So our goal is to be able to, you know, realize, um, going through all this effort is a long effort, is a long process. Our idea is, let's put something in place, let's find a quality contractor through the bid process. Um, and then do, normally what we do is a base contract of three years plus option years if it suits us. If it doesn't suit us, we just cancel out.
Any other discussion? Hearing none?
Council Chair.
Yep, sorry.
Um, the backup on this packet was pretty extensive, you know. Thank you very much for that. And it, it showed that, uh, J and T Crowe was outstanding in every category. I believe was graded the highest in every category, if I'm not mistaken. And, and I think this is a great choice. They're, they're a great company. They, they, they do very community-minded. Uh, and I think this is to keep them going, because they're, they are currently a company that we're using, correct?
They're, yes, correct.
Yeah, so I, I think it's a good idea. Yeah.
Definitely, I agree. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, yeah, one more thing. J T Crowe. Uh, I think they did that thing with, uh, our administration where they helped out at Target. They're always giving back to our community and they're in our community. Right? So they're already taxpayers and giving back to our community. So congratulations to them. If this passes, uh, hearing and no other discussion, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, we have Crestwood High School Homecoming Parade.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
Move that the Dearborn Heights City Council grant permission to Crestwood High School to hold their annual homecoming parade Friday, October eleventh, two thousand twenty-four at five thirty P M. With staging to begin at five o'clock, or five P M. as outlined in eight A.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion on that? Uh, I will say, uh, we have our trustee here who's probably representing the Crestwood School Board, uh, Trustee Najah, who's making sure that we approve this homecoming parade. And, uh, Najah, we are trustee. We're at your service and we thank you guys for this continuing and giving back to our community and showing the children. As Mr. Un would have been really upset, so. Any, any other discussion? Here, hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Congratulations, Mrs. Janun. Next up, we have the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six collective bargaining agreement for the Dearborn Heights Professional Firefighters Union, Local one-three-five-five AFL-CIO. It seems like everybody's fighting to do it. I'm gonna go ahead and give this one to Councilman Ahmad to go ahead and read it.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council compare with the recommendation of Mayor Bazey to approve twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-six collective bargaining agreement for the Dearborn Heights Professional Firefighters Union Local number one-three-five-five AFL dash CIO. This motion further authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city as outlined in eight dash B.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Saab. He rushed to do it. Sorry, Councilman, uh, Constance.
It's no problem.
It's no problem, but just for the record, Madam, uh, Clerk, Councilman Constance was rushing to second that one. Uh, any discussion on this?
Jessica.
Yes. Want to thank our firefighters for everything they do in our city and every, you know, run their lives out on the line for us every day. And, uh, you know, I just want to say, I hope things are, uh, improve at the fire departments for you guys pretty soon. So, thank you guys for your service.
I'd say I'll applause, uh, until, until hopefully this passes. Um, but I also just kind of echo Councilman Saab a little bit here. Uh, day in and day out, you guys are giving back to our community. Uh, it's no secret that you guys not just live in our city, because you stay at the fire station either at the south end or in the north end. Uh, but you guys are constantly giving back. Uh, you're shopping at our stores, you're going to our convenient places, you're staying within the community, uh, more than, I definitely know Councilman Ahmad. And, uh, I'm just kidding. And, um, you know, I, I thank you guys and I thank you for your services. Truly, when I see a, a, a strong union, a strong, uh, collaboration of people, I really, I think of the Dearborn Heights Fire Department, and I'm not just saying this. There are firefighters that are amazing in every community, but I assure you guys, Dearborn Heights has the best, the greatest fire department. So congratulations to you. And, and really, it, it starts, you know, you know, great leaders allows things like this to happen and Chief Brogan. You're definitely an amazing leader. You've been an amazing leader to this community. I was just at my neighbor's house helping her move. She's an older senior going to move to Arizona. I think I showed you the picture. She had a photo of Chief Brogan, I think twenty years ago. His hair was long, had no gray. Uh, uh, a lot more than yours, Mr. Un. And, and really, I, I, I looked at this and I said, this was like nineteen ninety-eight or two thousand and one. I said, wow. You weren't the chief, or maybe you were, I don't know. But, uh, you know, I thank you guys, because you guys are here to stay and you guys give back so much to us, so. Hopefully this passes.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I have one more thing to say, just, uh, it took a contract to get Phil and Chief, so I'll look at him outstanding over there, so. Keep him going.
Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, Council Chair. Uh, you know, that's the fire, our fire department is, is, is a major cog in our machine that runs the city. And we have all these different departments and to get this contract settled is a relief for myself and I know more than a relief for these guys and these girls that, you know, uh, that work hard for us every day. And I personally have used their services a few times and, uh, there's members of my family who may have not been here today if it wasn't for those firefighters. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I just want to mention, it's always great to see you in the chambers. Whether we approve a contract or not, you're always welcome. And thank you for all you do.
Any other discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Constance.
And, and thank you to our chief and the leadership they've shown and the union for hammering this out. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other discussion?
Just one quick comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, it took too long and I also have used your services and I thank you very much.
I agree. I agree with the Councilman on that one. Thank you. Uh, without further ado, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations. The ayes have it. You'd like to say a few words? No? Settle up.
I would just like to say, uh, thank you to our council. Thank you to the community for standing in solidarity with, uh, members of Local thirteen fifty-five. We're glad after twenty-four months this contract is done, so thank you. Thank you all.
Appreciate it. How about Chief Brogan?
Chief, would you like to say something?
Just, just echo what, uh, what Phil, Phil said, uh, Attorney Chief Paul. You know, it's a lot of work to get a contract done and we're glad that this one's done in, in the, in the rearview mirror now and we can, we can move forward and, and uh, continue doing the great work that these guys do. I'm very proud of them. Everything you said, that, that, I, I appreciate the thanks to me, but really, it, it's all these guys. I'm, I'm nothing without the guys, so.
I, I think they tried to follow your lead, uh, Chief, so that's why they're great.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have reports from city officials. We have nine A's, Clerk Sinia, amendment to annual publication, amendment notice of meetings.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council authorize a clerk to publish the updated annual publication amended notice of meetings, which reflects the amended meetings location of the Act three forty-five Police and Fire Pension Board as required under Public Act number two-six-seven, Public Acts seventeen seventy-six, as outlined in nine.
Second, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by the Honorable Councilman Constance. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations, Madam Clerk. Next up, we have a ninth, we're moving nine B. We're going to nine C. Uh, Fire Chief Brogan, purchase and payment of self-contained breathing apparatus equipment. Council Chair. Councilman, uh, Ahmad.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the purchase and payment of one replacement compressor from pressure vessel testing at a cost of twenty-two thousand five hundred seventy-two dollars to be paid from, uh, refer and maintenance budget account number one oh one, three-three-five, nine-three-two, zero-zero-zero as outlined in nine dash C.
Second, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Uh, Chief, can you give us a quick synopsis on this?
Yeah, so, so this compressor is what we use to fill our, uh, the air bottles that the firefighters wear when they go into fires. We have one at each station in the, in the south end. One has been failing for a long time. Now it's finally broken to the point where it can't be repaired. So, um, we, we, we did everything we can and it's quite expensive, we realized, but we got the best price we could and, um, and we're very happy with the uh, pressure vessel testing for coming through with a, uh, twenty-two thousand dollars. It's unheard of to get one at that, at that rate.
Uh, Chief, question for you. Does all the firehouse need one too, or?
No, that one's still in good shape.
Okay.
So.
Sir, this is for Annapolis?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up, we have ordinance and resolution, eleven A, Treasurer Explain Resolution Establishing a City Donation Policy.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the resolution establishing the city of, establishing a city donation policy per the Michigan Community Funds Act, Public Act thirty-eight of two thousand seventeen, providing M C L one-two-three dot nine oh five dash one. The municipality may receive and own a donation that is made for, for public purpose as outlined in eleven A.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilwoman Brier. Any discussion? Uh, I will say to the treasurer, uh, this is a great idea. I think, uh, many people would like to support a lot of the causes in the city of Dearborn Heights and I think in order to do so, you have to have, uh, you know, the Act thirty-eight, uh, that was established in two thousand and seventeen, provided by the M C L one-two-three-point-nine-zero-five-one. Um, so I think this is something that's, uh, extremely popular for the city. I think many others' communities do this as well. So now if we have great services by, let's just say, one of our residents, Angelo, who's cleaning up Beach Daily, right? And a bunch of people say, hey, you know what? We're gonna fill this donation and we're gonna pay those residents to have been helping cleaning up the parks or we can give it back to the children. This is a great, this is a great idea. I think this is just the start of it. So, um, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. This is crazy. The first time ever in a half hour we made a decision. Don't drink, sir, okay.
Just keep moving along.
Next up, we have new business, Dearborn Heights Moose Lodge.
Council Chair.
Councilman Saab.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the business license for Dearborn Heights Moose Lodge at two-seven-two-two-five-one as outlined in thirteen A.
Second, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by the Honorable Councilman Constance. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. I mean, I can't even drink it right now. Here we are, thirteen B. Okay. Next up, we have temporary food truck ta- license application for Solid Oak Eatery.
Council Chair.
Councilwoman Brier.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the temporary food truck slash tent slash cart license renewal application for Solid Oak Eatery is outlined in thirteen B and that's the location we went to the Grand Oak name.
Okay. Second, that should be a second. Council, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Now we're open up for discussion.
Councilman?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought we had a moratorium on food trucks. Why did we even have this on the agenda?
Great question. We don't have a moratorium on food trucks.
Yes. Yes, we did.
We did not.
We did.
There's nothing from the audience. No, it was, uh, we never had a moratorium. The study, the only moratorium we had was Councilman Saab's moratorium on no new mechanic shop, collision shops, gas stations, car washes. Used car. That's what it was. It was not a food truck.
I thought it was food trucks under tubes.
No, we, we denied them.
We denied them because of the, or it was not.
But I'm, I'm just curious to see what happens here, because I want to know if we're picking and choosing if we like a food truck or if we're saying no to all food trucks now today. I'm just curious.
I would be all food trucks until we get a master plan for the city to figure out where they're best situated and it would help, I mean, everybody.
We, we just had this discussion at the study session and it was basically discussing with the Corporation Council last week, Tuesday, to discuss where we'd see them. Councilman Saab asked for a limited amount on them, so did Councilman Ahmad. And then I believe we said you have to be at a certain distance. So we're waiting to hear back from, uh, Roger.
Council Chair, yes, I did add your changes with, uh, Carrie from the Buildings Department, so we should have it ready for you uh, to review. But they're designated areas within the ordinance. Um, and you can check that with the city map to see where they. But that, that, your, your question came up and we are conscious of it and have, I think have addressed it.
Okay, so is this within one of the designated areas?
We don't, we don't have any designated areas.
Do we wait until we find out we have one?
That's on this council to make a loan on it.
I think this is six months. That's the way we've been operating from, uh, the previous council. Every six, every six months, they will be granted until the ordinance is passed. The ordinance is for a year.
Right, right. Because originally this was just for Ramadan and we've been doing it for a few years during Ramadan. Oh, absolutely.
No, I, I don't, I want to, I want to make something clear. This is not just for Ramadan. You can have food, it was just a lot more popular during Ramadan. I don't want us to like single out and say that, well, this is happening because of Ramadan. This is not a religious thing. This is a community thing. And, and I want to make it clear, you can be atheist, Christian, Muslim, Jewish, whatever you want to be to be able to open up a food truck and it shouldn't be just for Ramadan. Like if somebody wants to do it for Christmas.
But that, why are we only giving them temporary six months instead of a year like we do other businesses then?
Because we don't have a food truck, we don't have a food truck license yet, so we're doing a temporary food truck license.
Okay.
Council Chair. Councilman Constance.
I believe this particular business, which is on Van Born, the food truck is right next to the business in what was, uh, Elite Photography and is now just an empty paved lot. So I think it's sort of an extension of the business.
Yeah. Well, I, I'm just, you know.
Council Chair? Yeah, go ahead, Council.
Yeah, that, uh, to expand on what Councilman Constance said, um, a lot of food trucks, they, 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 they bring their trucks and put them on a, uh, unrelated property, uh, like a video store or gas station or something. This particular food truck is right next to the building that owns, that owns this food truck, their business, Solid Oak Sausage. And from what I understand and visiting it, it's just where you can order something to be cooked right out there and because inside it's more or less all they're just sausages and they're on display and where they cook the stuff. So it's not the same as coming into an area and trying to take business away from another area, another.
I'm, I'm gonna dis- I'm, I'm gonna disagree with you, Councilman. Uh, this is a food truck selling food versus an individual that's selling jerky and, and sausages. So there's two different things. He's now taking the sausages and stuff. He's taking away from other businesses, just like any other ones that you were referred to. And he's selling sandwiches now, which is now could be potentially affecting brick and mortars like you stated at the last meeting. That's what I, I, I just want to make something very clear. We either.
That's what he sells inside. He sells sandwiches inside.
He has a brick and mortar in the city.
No, 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 time out, time out.
It's completely different.
Hang on. Hang on. So you're telling me if the, if the business owner that owned the gas station on Ford Road in Beach Daily wants to sell food out of there, it'd be okay because he owns the boat?
No, if you want to sell gas out of a, a, a truck.
No.
Sell the same product.
He's, he's selling sandwiches. He does not sell sandwiches inside.
Yes, he does.
Yeah, he does. No, he's making them out of a food truck. You need to have a hood. You have to have things prepared. You have to have a health license.
Now, he sells pit, pit. He needs sandwiches.
Point of order, everyone.
I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, like, you know, you know, I, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to say here, it seems like we're, we're so quick to approve a, a food truck license because we know them or we like them, but here comes another one and we're not approving it because we're saying, well, he owns the business and he's putting his food truck in front of it. What if he's not selling corn out of there?
He's still a taxpayer.
So, so are the person that's wanting the food truck there. You, you know, I want to make, I want to make something clear. If the gas station on Ford Road and Beach Daily says, I want to have a food truck there, he's a taxpayer.
But not the food truck.
What are you talking about?
Right, I know what he's saying.
The, the, the food truck person that's there is, is, is helping like a taxpayer.
This is a business owner that owns a truck on his property.
Yeah.
Selling out of his business.
Okay, here's, here's a business owner that's saying this is gonna help my business continue to rise.
But it's an outside person coming from a different city bringing a food truck.
You don't know that.
And they're charging them three, four thousand dollars to park there. He's not getting charged anything. It's on his property. He's paying taxes on their property.
You're not understanding though. Right now, we're saying, we, we don't like food trucks. That was always been the argument. We, we gotta put a, so slow down.
I know, I've said, if you own a business in the city, a brick and mortar, I fully support those trucks being on your property. It's exactly what I've said many times.
Okay.
Councilman?
I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
Maybe, let me understand this. The guy owns the building, the food truck, the guy who had the food truck actually owns the building that the property's on. So he's paying taxes to the city. So this is a different situation in my eyes. I agree with approving this.
Okay.
Because he does pay the taxes.
So, so let me ask you, let me ask you, let me, let me ask this all the question and I'm, I'm just trying to like, mind you, I'm just trying to grasp my head around this. Let's, and since the Councilman, uh, Wenzel brought up the video store, let's, let's bring up the video store. Let's just say the video store shuts down. And we no longer collect taxes on that. And we no longer have a food truck there. And the only way that they can pay the taxes so that, so that the city gets the revenue of the taxes is if this guy can be able to provide him some type of funding so that the business go. It's not, you know?
Okay, comparison. But let's just, let's keep it to this and not get off.
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody, when we had the study session, we didn't, uh, ask, uh, Mr. Farina to add, uh, some kind of, of, of personal property tax. So all these, uh, all these food trucks gonna start paying, uh, property tax. Either it would be paid through them or paid through the whoever owns the law.
Well, I, I, I beg to differ with you, Council Chair.
Yes.
Um, I, I brought up the fact that this increases, a food truck on a property increases the sales area, which, which should increase the taxes. I brought that up at our meeting. So it was, it was brought up that, you know. And if that's, if this is the case with Solid Oak Sausage, if, you know, if their trailer is, you know, ten by ten, it's hard square feet, that should be hard square feet added onto their sales area and the, the taxes should be increased.
Uh, uh, Councilman.
When I was talking about personal property tax, it's different than you're talking about real estate tax. I don't think you can, uh, charge a real estate tax on a food truck. It has to be a brick and mortar, but, uh, I think that's a way to make more revenue for the city and make sure all these food trucks are in line. I think would be, uh, fair just to charge them a personal property tax. Like we charge any business, like even the gas station, they still charge them a personal property tax inside, inside the business. So this is still, I, I think it's part of the business or part of, you know, doing business, so it's a personal property and it should be taxed. Correct, Mr. Farina?
Your, your, um, suggestions from Tuesday with Carrie, I did add the twenty truck limits for the trucks and location. Um, I was just meeting with the treasurer today on the fifteen hundred property tax, uh, the liquid property, the property taxes that we have outstanding. So I will look at how we can add this to it, but I understand your, your suggestions.
I mean, I, I agree. There has to be some type of levy that, you know, we can put this to rest.
Okay. We will address it.
Councilman Constance.
They're, they're, these are all good points and there's a lot of broader issues which we'll incorporate in our ordinance hopefully, but I think this particular food truck is right next to the building and it's on, there was a building there, it was infested with rats. Uh, that was a, a, Elite Photography and so now it's a nice paved lot. It's just sitting there vacant. I think it's a good use for the property and.
Awesome.
Um, more business on the Van Born road.
Which, by the way, I've had their sandwiches. They're great. Really good. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. This is amazing. Under an hour? Next up, we have comments from council members. Council Chair. And the Wenzel.
Thank you. Um, last Saturday, not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before that, we held our, uh, first annual family fun field day combined with the Dearborn Heights District Seven Dad's Club. And, uh, it was a completely free event. And it was a completely free event. I, I was advertising it. And it was a big success. We had well over five hundred people show up throughout the day there. And we had sponsors that donated money and sponsors that donated food. And Denise Melonowski, she was, she was a contributor. And Hassan Ahmed and Mo have contributed to the Family Fun events in the past. And Hassan Saab has been more than gracious and helpful with me organizing these things. And Nancy Brier was there Saturday. She spent the entire day, day there. And along with Rose Trappi, they worked in our, inside of our, inside of, inside the registration area. And I couldn't, I couldn't say this without mentioning the fact that we had the Crestwood High School National Art Society students there that were phenomenal, like always. They, they backed me on everything I do. They're there for me. Uh, we couldn't have done it without J and T Kova, which you just mentioned. They're, they're phenomenal and they just jumped right in. They came in with their giant tow truck with a forty, fifty foot boom with a giant American flag on it and flew it the whole time there. It was, it was great. AMB Smokehouse, they donated all a bunch of hamburgers. Alamar, they, they donated buns, ketchup. I say Bob Conson, but our, our Treasurer Lisa Hicks Clayton donated lots of things. Uh, she's, she's phenomenal supporting stuff. Nan, I mentioned, Zohair Abdul-Hawk was a donator. Lynn Senya, 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 she's always there for me. She's always donating to, to our, our, our family fun activities. Uh, the Wensel family, my whole family was out there doing some. The District Seven Dads Club, Studs Hardware, Wassam Isa, he donated money. Mike Mackey, Ali Sports, they made a big donation. Hashem's Market, Hassan Bazi, both of them, the old one and then young one. Both Hassan Bazi, they were really great. They helped out, they helped out a lot.
Was it the young one or the old one? They both look old.
Settle the record.
Younger and older, I guess. They both work for the city too.
Yes.
But anyway, they know, I thank you guys. And, you know, and we had this, we had the VIP Car Wash up there. They were a great sponsor. I mean, Paul and George, I mean, these guys, God bless you guys. You, you're awesome, man. Anytime I'm there. Hassan Jamal, every time he comes up with something, he don't help donate all the chicken because we had chicken. Uh, we had hot dogs, hamburgers, all halal, all, all free, barbecued. We had a big, big event. Um, we had the Warren Valley Golf Course, Jason Purcell, Revive Golf Management. They came in, they put out a free clinic for the children there, golf clinic, which was really cool. It was a big hit there. And we had, you know, Westborne Car Wash, Saturn Food Market. We had Tony's Car Wash contributing, contributing to the day. Uh, the McDonald's Veris Serena, Bart's Bakery. And I, I know I forgot a few of them, but this was a community, this brought the community together and it was phenomenal. There were people from North and South Dearborn Heights having a good time together. We had a water slide, we had bounce houses, face painting, rock painting. Uh, we had a, 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 um, a young entrepreneurs fair where we had kids come and set up tables and, and, and show what they were doing, projects they were working on, selling things. We had a, a small farmer's market, which we, we've been talking about the city council at one of our last meetings we had. We're, we're looking into having a farmer's market in Dearborn Heights coming up. Hopefully by the, before the summer's over when all the crops come in. But the event was great. Thanks to everyone on council. You know, thanks to all the residents that showed up. Thanks to all our sponsors. Couldn't have done without you. God bless all of you. Thank you.
Counselor Chair.
Before we leave on that, oh, wait a minute. Before we leave on that point, I just want to show a photo. I don't know if everybody can see it. This is Councilman Wensel and he, and he's picking up trash. And, you know, he talks about all the donors and all the people that were there. Uh, but he doesn't talk about his wife Debbie saying, I can't wait to put my feet up. I've been tired. I've been here since, you know, six AM. Doesn't talk about, you know, Cara and all the kids that were there all day, making sure like, you know, and, and not just this event. It's every event that they do. I mean, his, you know, his son walked around taking my son all the way, jumping on all those bounce houses. He does a really, really good job. And I think, you know, Councilman Wensel doesn't recognize himself and his family and his brother and his nephew, who really go above and beyond for fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen hours applying this for the community. So Councilman, congratulations. You know, thank you, Counselor Chair.
That's, that's pretty cool. But you know what?
Well, hang on, Councilman, I wasn't done for you. You're going to earn the spotlight.
We're getting a plaque?
Yeah. You know, but really, Tom, man, I, I, I think this is an amazing thing, bringing the community together. And, you know, anytime that you and your family can be a part of any type of collaboration of bettering this community, you're there, man. Serving on the council, like you said, serving on, uh, the planning commission back in, you know, before I was born. Um, you, you do, you do, you do a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
Councilman Saab?
Yes, just a few things I want to.
Well, I want to say one thing before that. Okay, just to say, well, thank you, you know, it's, it's, I get kids, a lot of hard work, but I tell you, it pays off immensely when I see all the smiles on all the kids' faces and the parents' faces that come out and enjoy all this. That makes it all worthwhile. But I, I'd be, I, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, we capped off, we started at eight o'clock in the morning. And at eight o'clock at night, twelve hours later, we started a softball game, the, uh, the Jason Mikowski Memorial Fund Softball Game between the firefighters, the Dearborn Heights Firefighters and the Dearborn Heights Police Department. And it was a really good game. It was really close. I mean, it was like deadlocked all the way, you know. And in the end, the, the firefighter squeaked out of victory and it was. Yeah, yeah. It was a really good event and I, and I hope, you know, and, and Barb organized this. Um, she, she, she helped me organize and she took over the, the softball game and God bless her. And I hope that we, we can do it again next year. You know, if not at, at the Family Fun Event, you know, we make sure we get this game on again next year.
That's another thing that I wanted to say. You did a phenomenal job. And I know Barb Renner's also jumped in and organized the softball game back up there with you and put a, a bunch of baskets that you guys were able to raffle off that she was donating to the police and fire to all the proceeds. So congratulations and thank you to Barb as well.
She did all the work for those, the raffle items.
Thank you, thank you, Barb. Counselor Saab.
A few things. First of all, I want to congratulate JT Kova on getting their contract. Moved into the city. Honestly, this company goes above and beyond in the community. There's not a time you call them for any event, anything going on in the community that you guys don't show up and come through. As our community oriented and, you know, your roots are in the community and we appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, Family Fun Day to Tom Wensel. It was a great event. Every event that you do is, comes out good, Tom. It reunites the whole community. I'm proud to be a part of it, just like any, every other council person. And I want to thank Barb for pulling it through and let me help her out with the fifty fifty raffle, which was rigged. Let's run it up the record. Yeah, exactly. A few, a few things I want to talk about, about speeding in our community, man. It's, uh, it's, uh, we need, you know, the enforcement. I had a meeting with Chief Swoob and he assured me that this is something we're gonna, we're gonna tackle on and take on just. The neighborhoods are just becoming more reckless day by day. And hopefully with this enforcement we're going to do, we're going to send a message to the public. You know, hopefully our new impound yard is going to have a lot of space for cars. We're going to be towing for speeders. So it's that, and then, uh, how about trash and bike? Pick up your trash in front of your house, cut your lawns. Some of these homes in the city are disgusting. I hope enforcement will do a better job on it, enforcing it. And then I want to give out to, to an outstanding citizen that has walked in, Les Zach Daher. Welcome to the meeting.
Sorry, I'll leave.
Thank you, guys. I yield my hand. Malsap.
Councilman Ahmad, sorry. No problem, Counselor Chair. Thank you very much. I also would like to echo my colleague, Councilman Wensel. You did a great job. Thank you. And thank the Wensel family for an outstanding job that day. Uh, and I don't know if you guys know, Councilman Wensel is of many talent. I don't know if you guys saw the shirt that he did, Have Police, Have Fire. So I mean, that's a, that's a new job right there, you know. And I'd like to congratulate the Fire Department in winning the softball game and good luck for the Police Department next year. And Counselor Chair, thank you for running a very short meeting this today. Good job. I think I'll be out for that.
Thank Councilman Saab for allowing us to finish the meeting up quick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman, the Honorable Councilman Conson.
Thank you, Counselor Chair. Um, Honorable Counselor Chair. Uh, I'm glad to see that we sent the towing contract out for bid and we got a very good towing company doing our towing. For years, former Councilman, Council Chair Ken Baron complained and I think rightfully so that the contract was sort of always just decided by the Chief of Police. And the company we've got is outstanding. I'm glad to see it went out for competitive bid. I'd like to also thank Councilman Wensel and his family for making the field day for District Seven. A very special field day and for all they worked, they put in. The hamburgers especially were, were, were great. And just to echo what Councilman Saab said, yeah, it's, a, a, a car is not a toy. And summer nights are long and warm and anybody that is speeding or drag racing, it, it's, there's a good chance that it's going to end up in disaster and possibly with the driver losing their license or even injuring someone. So summer's almost over, but let's, let's cut down on speeding. Thank you.
Another Councilman.
Actually, I have one more comment. Happy sixteenth birthday to your daughter, Mr. Wensel.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Wensel.
Thank you for showing up to the party. Appreciate it.
And Rose was the best sport there.
Yeah, Rose was there.
All right, guys, let's wrap this up. She, she, she. Let's wrap this up. Come on, I love this. Sorry, thank you.
All right, we're all for announcements now.
We're on announcements, okay. Tomorrow night, six o'clock, three, 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 five, South Beach Daily, we will have our E-course Crick Committee Meeting. And I'm a little concerned that the ten million that was given by the county may not make it to much of Dearborn Heights. Last I heard, they were in Allen Park. And what they're doing is taking away a lot of trees and fences and other things and clearing stuff and allegedly taking stuff from the water. So I'm hoping to find out more details as to if we can expect anything to happen for us before tomorrow night's meeting. But more importantly, on the twenty fifth, which is this Thursday, uh, we have our South Dearborn Heights Civic Association meeting. And I believe we've lucked out with two speakers now, thanks to Chief helping me. Uh, we have the gentleman who couldn't make it last month, Bill Dishram. And he will try to bring along a couple of the people who do the inspection. So the Ordinance Department will be there for you to talk to. You have questions, you have concerns, they'd be happy to speak with you. That meeting is at seven o'clock on Thursday, same location on Beach Daily. That's the Westwood Schools Admin Building. And our second speaker is Max, I believe, from the Fire Department. So he has all kinds of things he can tell us and available for questions. So hope to see everyone there. It's open to the entire city. Thank you.
Um, announcements?
Uh, yeah, just a public announcement I want to make, you know, for the following officer that passed away in Melvindale this week is, if anybody's interested in his visitation, it's going to be Thursday, the twenty fifth, at twelve, from twelve o'clock, I believe, from twelve to eight, at the Ford Performance Art Center in Dearborn on Michigan Avenue. Um, and the religious service will be Friday, eleven o'clock at the Dearborn Mosque, the American Muslim Society on Burner, on the south side of Dearborn. Uh, if anybody's interested.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
Any other announcements?
Counselor Chair, I, I've got an announcement that I forgot something. Um, you know, I, I was naming off these sponsors and there's one sponsor that I, I just looked at. It was at the top of my page. I couldn't see it when I folded it over. But Cordy's Collision, um, they're, you know, they're, they're in their community, Dearborn Heights. The owners are Dearborn Heights residents. They've lived in Dearborn Heights their whole lives. And they're another one of these companies that this can't say no when you come in for a spot, asking for a sponsorship. And I just wanted to make sure I mentioned Matt and Lisa Cordy, great, two great people.
Always. That's awesome. Uh, any other announcements from any other madam? Yep, I would have zoomed next.
Okay. Good evening, everybody and our citizens here today. Um, two weeks from now, we will not have a council meeting because there is a primary election. Um, Tuesday, August sixth. Per state law, registering to vote within fourteen days of an election under Michigan law, online and mail voter registration is not permitted within fourteen days of an election. Beginning today, eligible residents who still need to register to vote or update their registration must now do so in person with proof of residency at the Dearborn Heights City Clerk's Office. Six oh four five Fenton, Monday through Thursday, from eight AM to five PM. On this primary ballot, Michigan does not register voters by party, but state law requires voters to cast votes for only one party candidates in the primary election. So you will have to pick Democratic or Republican and you will only have to stay in that lane. Okay? Votes for candidates in multiple parties on the same ballot will not be counted. The tabulator won't accept it if you are at the, are at your precinct. The tabulator will spit it out. If you want to spoil that ballot, you can get another ballot reissued. In addition, there is also a nonpartisan section. Um, and I think Wayne County has two proposals on there too. And the ballot is two-sided, so make sure you're turning around. Um, absentee ballots, we can't encourage you more to get them in as soon as you can. Um, absentee ballots can only be returned to box office within your city. Uh, absentee ballot return envelopes must be signed in ink by the voter, which must, must match the one the clerk has on file with the voter's registration. Ballot must be received no later than eight o'clock on Election Day to be counted. Voters who have already submitted their absentee ballot can track it at Michigan.gov/vote to ensure it has been received. We do, um, receipt them back in through the system daily. Uh, Michigan drop, Dearborn Heights drop boxes are located here at City Hall, John F. Kennedy Junior Library, the Justice Center and the Richard, Richard A. Young Center. Um, early voting, that was new with Prop Two. Kim's not here, but it's at the Canfield Center. Any Dearborn Heights?
Oh.
She's been gracious enough to allow us the building for each, um, election this year for, for February, August and November. Dearborn Heights registered voters can't go to the Canfield Community Center, eighteen oh one North Beach Daily, beginning July twenty seventh to August fourth, from eight thirty AM to four thirty PM, to cast a ballot in person prior to Election Day. Uh, weekend hours, we are open Saturday, August third, from eight AM here at City Hall, eight AM to four PM to registered voters and or issue absentee ballots. And then Election Day is, polls will open on Tuesday, August sixth, from seven AM to eight PM. Last but not least, if anybody's interested in being an election worker, you do get paid. We have one of our election workers here today. I have applications in case anybody would like to see me out there.
I'm going to do it.
If you want, I'll give you an application then.
Okay.
Okay, come and see me out there.
I gotta do it all day?
Yes.
Yeah. Nobody's on the ballot. He's not on the ballot.
Celebrity worker.
So, but that's. And I would like to thank Councilman Wensel for all he does for our community. It was an awesome event. My granddaughter had a phenomenal time. That slide that came down, I don't think she knew. She seen all the kids going up and there was a water slide in the back. And she didn't know what she was getting into, I don't think. She's only three and a half. And she got up there and I think she was happy when she came down, the look on her face. Thanks to the Fire Department that was out there. She just, at first, she said, Grandma, I can't get my eyes wet. So I said, put your sunglasses on. And she had a best time. She had a best time. So thank you. And it was an awesome, you know, the whole day. Well, I wasn't there the whole day, but in the morning with Lucy and then at night for the baseball game, that was phenomenal. Thank you.
Uh, next up, Mr. McCaffrey.
Well, hello, Counselor Chair and Mayor. Just want to talk about an upcoming program next Saturday, August third, from one to four PM at JFK Library. We will be having our summer reading wrap-up and backpack giveaway. We will be having ice cream, a raffle, scavenger hunt, crafts, free books and backpacks in preparation for going back to school. Uh, we are accepting supplies and backpacks through this week. So if anyone feels so inclined, they can donate at JFK. Uh, should be a good time, so come on up. Also, last week, the library delivered over eleven hundred activity boxes to over four hundred homes. So this was the culmination of a great deal of work. So I wanted to thank the friends of the library, A.J. Wyatt-Moir and everyone who helped out. Uh, this was made possible in part through a grant from the Thirteenth District, Tleeb's Office. So thanks again for that. And that's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much.
Hi, I just want to remind everybody about our concert this Thursday at the Canfield Center. It's featuring the Detour Band. We had them last year and they were a huge, huge hit. Um, so we're having them back this year. Also, we have the motorcycle show. So if you're into motorcycles, um, hopefully we'll have a big turnout for that. We did last year, so I'm counting on it. This year it goes from seven to ten and there's a lot of free family activities for the kids.
Mad's a big motorcycle fan now.
Yeah, if we see him drive up on a motorcycle, a Harley.
I mean, he dropped.
It'll be interesting.
He forgot to hit it on, put the kickstand up and he dropped it, but. Ooh, we were almost there.
That's not good.
I wish I was joking.
Counselor Chair.
Hey, Counselor Chair. Uh, our, sure, our, our, our library director, Mike McCaffrey, this guy is, he's phenomenal. Uh our, sure, our, our, our library director, Mike McCaffrey, uh this guy is, he's phenomenal. I mean, what he does for those two libraries and the activities and the events he put on, puts on are phenomenal. It's, it's like, there's something going on there all the time, you walk into the library and there's, everything is so organized, the people are so polite. Uh it, it, it's, there's things going on, like all these activities, especially like, there's just recently, we had the uh Thompson Maxwell uh. Memorial Service at the Little Red Schoolhouse, which turned out really great, have a lot of people there for that and that, that's, that, that in itself is fun. The library has a lot to do with maintaining that and, and raising funds and stuff for that, that building there. Yeah, he's, the guy is way underrated, as much as he gets up there and talks. There's a thousand things that go on behind the scenes, ten thousand things go on behind the scenes that this guy does, him and his staff. Really, really great, they're, they're a tribute to Dearborn Heights, I tell you, thank you, Michael.
And you know. Our fire, you know, firefighters, they.
Okay, come on, okay, I was gonna say, they, they came to the family fun day without a contract and, and hosed down all the kids. Without a contract, thank you, guys.
Go ahead, Roger.
Um I don't know if many people know, I just uh found out today, but Mr. Deeb was an excellent, more than just a colleague, he's a friend, his mother passed away. Today, we just asked your prayers and we can let him go, he's overseas.
We, we should definitely do a moment of silence for Mr. Deeb's mother, who just passed away. Thank you. Um next up on Zoom, we have Madam Treasurer and Clerk U. Unmuted Treasurer.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Um I'm, yeah, hi, I'm speaking as the elected treasurer by nearly twelve thousand voters. The treasurer's office has made several changes and improvements over the years, including expanding our payment options. Adding a phone app, adding um you know, kiosks, things like that. But I have to say, it's a team effort, so everyone in my office, very important to the team. Um I feel like an insult to me is an insult to the team. And there's policies that are written and implemented, including the internal controls. Which are part of the Michigan Department of Treasury's Internal Controls Protocol. I am truly disappointed by our mayor's ongoing attacks and personal agenda to discredit the treasurer's office. Politicizing the Dearborn Heights Police Department. To find out that the mayor continues to slander not only me, but even many of you, the city council members. I find it unacceptable. I've always tried to rise above this. However, last week, I had a director from the police department come to the treasurer's office. That was there for security, to do a check, ended up in our treasurer's vault, just asking questions. And had seen that everything was secured. I'm a little disappointed, this is not a qualifier, if there's a problem or an issue or a law broken, you file complaints. With Michigan State Police or Department of Treasury. You do not come into the office, I always want to cooperate with everybody, by the way, because I'm always looking for ways to improve. So I did welcome him into the office, because I, I'm always open to that. But in closing, I'm not sure why some use uh different techniques like deflection or distractions on others. I'm doing the job I was elected by our residents. I'm a Michigan Certified Public Treasurer, Advanced Certified Public Investment Manager. I'm a member of Michigan Government Finance Officers, Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association. And a board member for Wayne County Treasurers Association. I'm not telling you all these things because I want to impress you or wow you or give you my resume. I just want you to be aware and emphasize that these things are a result of hard work, discipline, honesty and integrity. All foundations of your Dearborn Heights Treasurer's Office. So the only thing I'm gonna leave with you is a quote that I've heard before, is that if. The truth is not fitting your narrative that you're trying to spin and sell to people, then you try to influence it and change that. That's the only alternative people have. I, again, I'm very disappointed and I want to go on public record for this, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer, and I'm sorry that you're feeling this way, that this is happening. Um you know, that it's unacceptable and you should not feel this way, you should not feel. Um harassed or attacked or intimidated by anybody. And if you do, I, I do recommend you to, you know, consult a attorney. Um consult, you know, the authorities. And I would definitely report it, I mean, I'm glad and I thank you that you brought this here to the public and just know that it's unacceptable. It's not okay. And um my advice to you would be contact an attorney or contact the Michigan State Police.
Yes, thank you.
Or the astute Attorney General.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Council Chair and Council Members for your time and to the public as well.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, you can unmute her, man. Um anyone else from the, from uh the administration on announcements? Seeing none, I'm gonna open this up to public comments. Pete, sir, you look really sharp, I'm not even gonna give you three minutes, I'm gonna give you twenty. I'm gonna give you three minutes. Your name, the city residing in the.
All I have to say, my name is Hassan Ayun, I don't, I could tell you P O Box one, one, three, two, Dearborn, Michigan, four, eight, one, two, one.
Thank you, sir.
First of all. You know, the treasurer sits there and talks that the police department went to her office. First of all, the, the police department is supposed to contact the Attorney General's office.
Correct.
Or, or the FBI to investigate. You cannot investigate the clerk yourself. First of all, I don't know what's going on, why they're trying to, they wanted her to take a lie detector test.
What?
Yes. I'm, I'm positive. I am positive, that's why I heard, that's why I came here, they wanted her to take a lie detector test. I don't know what happened, what was the reason, but I think you guys should investigate why they asked her that. And you can ask her, did they, did they not?
I'm gonna pause this time for a second, I'm listening, uh you can unmute the.
Unmute, listen, ask you, please.
Hello, hi, um yes, so what you're referring to, and I'll be very open, I'm a very transparent person. I was asked to do a lie detector test on June thirteenth, which I believe violates my rights as a person with multiple. Um that was um Lieutenant Gazowski. And I believe, and I could be wrong, but I thought it was Director Vanderplow, there was somebody brought in from ATF. It was over um some, there was a cash donation, you know, the cashiers collect money. Which I said, we're not, we should not be doing that. And allegedly, there's money that was missing, but it was during the time that I was on medical leave. From December nineteenth until March the tenth, and they still had me do a lie detector test. Um and I was advised, well, you didn't do well, we don't think you did it, but we think you know who did. Um which I think is maybe a tactic, but again.
Yes, that's against her.
She said yes. I know, hold on, I want to ask you a question on the record, you did a lie detector test?
Did I? Yes, June thirteenth, at the Dearborn Heights Police Station, by an ATF officer.
Why was ATF involved in this?
I do not know, I just know my rights were violated, because again, I have a disability, multiple sclerosis. Which is well known to have fa- false positives.
Before me. On me.
But also, that was, had that event, when I came back for medical leave, I'm the one that filed the police report. If that money was gone before I got back from my medical leave, it should have been filed before I got back. I'm the one that filed the police.
Thank you, go ahead.
Just, Council, one question, I'm sorry, you said it was the ATF that gave you the, the, that did the lie detector test or the police department did?
Yes, yes, sir, no, no, it was at the police station, at the Justice Center, it was an ATF officer. He knew I had multiple sclerosis, he, you know, again, some of the questions that were asked, I'm not gonna go into, because they were just. You know, about my deceased son and everything else.
Was it videotaped?
Yeah, but does, from, from my recall, does the ATF handle any fin- financial?
ATF is for fire. And explosives.
Yeah, I feel it was mishandled in my own opinion, but that's just my opinion, ladies and gentlemen.
People, why wasn't, uh, why weren't you guys uh aware of this? Let's unmute the clerk, I don't, I don't, I mean, I'm sorry, I saw you sustain the clerk.
Yeah, this is disturbing.
I mean, I don't know, Roger, is this normal to you?
I, I would advise not to discuss anything. No, it's not on the record.
Yes, it is.
I will not discuss. I have a right not to. I would advise us not to, until everything is checked out, that's all I'm saying.
Let's not raise our voice to that and throw it at us. Yeah, it's okay.
No, it's okay, you can, you know, everybody has their own opinion, you know?
Your time, go ahead, your time started.
Like I told everybody, you know, you can't do that to somebody. You can't just tell somebody what's it called, they, they advised, she, she cannot contact attorney. They just came to Jakowski, that guy that you guys talking about, she, the supervisor, I filed a grievance against him. What happened to my grievance? I've never heard anything back. So, right now, she could file a grievance against him, with the chief of police, and the chief of police has to investigate the situation. Or she could file it with the Attorney, uh, with the Attorney General's office, they can't come here and tell her to do a lie detector test. You can't. I can't believe it, you investigate something like this, you try to, they, they, they're just one, one little thing on her. To sit there, what's it called, you guys are supposed to be aware of this. Somebody has to be aware. Uh you, you want, what's it called, because, I don't know, it doesn't make sense.
Clerk didn't tell, I mean, the treasurer didn't tell us.
She's. She doesn't know what's going, what to say, probably. She, you know, you would be embarrassed, she doesn't know what to say, she, she's confused, she doesn't know, she tells you, I was on vacation. If you do, is a, what's it called, you want to investigate her? You don't tell her to take a lie detector test, you do an investigation, you walk in, you do an audit, and you take all the paperwork. And then you do all the what's it called, like, it's simple, then they come back and it, the grand jury will issue a, a, a warrant. It don't work like that. They probably told her it was the ATF and it probably wasn't, find out exactly who it was, what ATF person came and talked to her. Did they come without warrant to get, to get what's it called? Or wha- wha- what was it, what was the allegations?
Did she waive her rights though?
I don't know, we don't know this. She, she just never, listen, if you've never been in trouble, you don't know the law, to remain silent, don't say nothing that to incriminate you. But she, she, they probably didn't read her rights. Was there a recording, was it videotaped? Is it foible? You know, you, you have to understand something, it's very disturbing, you didn't even know about it, did you?
No.
That's very disturbing.
From the audience, please, thank you, Mr. Wenzel, your time is up. Council Chair. Uh well, I'm keeping it to the public right now, Councilman, please. But I'm gonna give, go ahead.
Hey, guys, my name is Zach Daher.
Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Okay.
Give you a business name.
Hey, guys, my name is Zach Daher, I live, uh, I live in Dearborn, but I'm here on behalf of a client. So my client nonstop calls me, um he has a property and his backyard, so. He lives on Plainfield and then there's a property on Amboy, now, they already have a six-foot privacy fence and on top of the privacy. Privacy fence, they have like a three-foot knot. And it's ruining, ruining all his views, so, you know, it's, I could share the photo with you.
We'll get with the building department, you and I tomorrow, and I'll take care of it for you.
Awesome, thank you.
Here, thank you. I'm Mr. Wallen, I'll be calling him tomorrow. Okay, anyone else in the audience? Okay, we're gonna take it, okay, yep, we step right up.
Mr. Councilman Chair, um so I guess we need to, I'm just fully advocate. So one of the things that's an issue for various people within living within Detroit Way and the Red Care Network. And unlicensed tenants is housing advocacy, and so I think that doesn't really promote it. I was very passionate about this, I retired from uh Michigan and I started a consulting business. So issue number two is, what is the process for a provider to come to a city? And open a license or unlicensed home? When I investigated this, this was something that wasn't, it wasn't updated and I think it was ran through Michigan. It was ran through, but it wasn't updated, but I do think there needs to be a procedure for when group homes are coming into communities. Cause it, it can really be a barrier, you could have somebody who's not high functional, somebody who's functional and you don't know. What is, what, staff, so I just think that it's an issue, I've always advocated against Detroit Way and the Red Care Network. And the same thing, I kind of get, you know, the black sheep advocacy, I can go into that, but I'm not. But I just think there needs to be a procedure, because I think that if you allow any group home to come in with that information. You, you, you have hypotrophic medication in houses and it, it causes a lot of things. I just didn't know if you guys had a guideline or something, but that needs somebody's staffers.
That is, that is great, something I think we need to really consider. Uh I would probably consult with Mr. Deeb, but I know his mother just passed away, God rest her soul.
Okay.
So maybe you can get your contact information to George, George, can you get him in contact with Mr. Deeb and have Mr. Deeb give him a call?
Okay, thank you.
Council Chair?
Yes, sir. Hang on one second, sir, please, you're gonna come right here to George?
Um it was mentioned at a meeting, uh last meeting or a meeting before about a uh, a disability commission. And this might be, you know, this might be something that that would be a part of, and I, I spoke with this gentleman several occasions. And I've, I've been behind the scenes kind of getting together a group of residents who would be interested in serving on this commission.
And I've also reached out to, I think almost a year ago, I reached out to our. Roger and, and I said, hey, like, let's start to see him. I know, and it's established, but just nobody went back and showed up, but like, let me give you an example, in Dearborn, when the Homecoming Festival happens, when they open up at noon. They'll allow anybody with a disability going at nine thirty or ten AM to be able to enjoy the festival before anybody comes in. And so like, we should be offering these types of services.
For sure.
Also, Chair, I would add that we had, um, we had an ADA coordinator to Mr. Hassan Jamal's office who left. I've spoken, I had spoken to HR Margaret, has like to put together someone, she's left, so we are in the process of working on. I think there is someone designated, I will check with administration, but you can work with them, Mr. Wenzel. Because it's absolute, it's a, it's a statutory requirement, we have to have a coordinator, the people for fifty or more, so, not a choice.
Thank you. Council Chair?
Yes, sir, Councilman. And there, there is a procedure regarding opening a group home, uh you know, the person has to have a property, but it's largely controlled by the state of Michigan. They're regulated by the state of Michigan. Um it's not something that he might necessarily direct to, uh especially the city council.
I, I would add to, uh, Council Chair, I would add to Councilman Sobs. That there's, the type of group homes is the ones that just uh room and board, they have others that do medications. Um they're all regulated by the state and they have to get approved by the state, inspected by the state.
Unlicensed people.
Right, now, that, that's another unlicensed, but there are still requirements with the cities for unlicensed group homes.
I just want to make you, to set the record, it was Councilman Constant, not, you said Councilman Sob. You said Councilman Sob.
I, I meant Constant.
I, 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 no problem.
But we can look into, once the information is passed to George, I've worked with group homes, numerous ones, I've done litigation with the group homes. So I will talk to um you, sir, after.
Thank you so much.
Get your information.
Okay, um. Anyone else in the public? The Honorable.
Rose Trapp, Beach, Tulane Street, Dearborn Heights. I'm asking you, please, don't make me come to each meeting and repeat myself, like I had to do with the toilets. I want to know, and so does everybody else in the city, what's going on with that fire station, what's gonna happen? It's enough of the shit, let's get it going.
Well, I will give you a quick update on the fire station, uh I've, I believe I spoke with the administration, they went out for specs on the roof already. They said by Friday, we should be receiving several different quotes. Uh we are moving extremely, extremely fast on the fire station, once they get the uh, the roofs fixed on both. Kind of like what Councilman Wenzel was saying, then they'll go out and they'll start uh doing the remediation and fixing up like some of the mold and cleaning things out. But you gotta fix the roofs first and you had to do specs, then you had to issue up the specs to an RFP, a lot of people bid on it to go out and repair and fix it. But, I mean.
Yeah.
It's not acceptable, I agree, it's not acceptable. Um and this is something that was brought to my attention, a meeting before we got here, and things are moving, I can assure you. I can assure you on that. Um, I do, sir, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Ben Strapkowski.
Vince Strapkowski, Dearborn Heights, Columbia Street, Wayne County. Great event, Mr. uh, so that you put on. And uh, thank you for putting on the um, along with the softball memorial game for the police memorial in the fire department. It it was a pretty close game with like thirty-four to seven or something like that. I think they were mercy'd within the first fifteen minutes, so, but yeah, we gave it a best shot, right? Um, so I was glad it was done, um. Wherever it's going to be held, either with your event or the Spirit Festival, whatever you want to call it, that's got to be held because it's for one purpose, and that was for the memorial of Jason McCoskey. Um, so with that said, we'll see you next year. Also, um, I'm glad that the firefighters finally got their uh contract uh, um, taken care of. But uh, this is only going until two thousand twenty-six. Yeah, well, maybe the mayor should start negotiating now so he can get it done on time. And uh, you know, maybe his criminal attorney could uh advise him on how to get things done. This is absolute crap, what we're hearing from the treasurer's office on what has gone on. Mr. Chairman, I'm asking you to call for a state's attorney general to investigate our police department, investigate our mayor, and investigate the entire staff. How do you have a commanding officer or so-called officer come and disrupt a meeting two weeks ago and stand before you like he was going to vaporize you or something? Does this guy have a mental issue or what? Obviously, all our officers have to go through a psychiatric evaluation. Did they go through a psychiatric evaluation before they were hired?
No.
You don't, because they didn't go through the process. I'm demanding a state investigation, and I want to see you on the phone first thing in the morning, like getting it done. This is absolute bullshit, what has happened to our city. Now, if you don't want to call, I'll start calling channel four, channel seven, and everybody else. We need something done, and we need it done now.
You have my word, I will contact the State Department tomorrow morning and see what happened, uh, if it was
And also get these guys a new house. This is bullshit.
All right, thank you. Enough of the fun. So when you come back to one meeting and everything blows up again.
What I gotta do? I'm speaking the truth, the truth hurts sometimes.
Um, we're we're gonna, we're we're gonna go up to Zoom. Um, we're gonna start off with Ms. Barbara Rann, who's had her end up patiently for the last, I don't know, I think twenty minutes. Well, thank you, Barbara. Grab, I'm going to have you unmute yourself. She goes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to um, regarding the Jason McCoskey Memorial
Before you start, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on.
Barbara Rennie, Detroit Street, Dearborn Heights. Good?
Yep.
All right. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out for the Jason McCoskey Memorial Game. Thank you, Tom and DH Seven, for providing the field for us to do this. I would like to thank all the donors for the raffle. All the money is going for the new memorial at the Justice Center that looks like crap. Um, as to the shirt tobacco, I do apologize. I am the one who ordered them. H O R U's the templates from three years ago, which they spelt Jason's name wrong. They did not use my template from two thousand and six with the correct spelling. I worked with Jason, I know Jason's father, I do know how to spell McCoskey. Um, and Denise was gracious enough to pay for them all, so I just want to say I am the one who ordered them. Deanna Hall is the one who they got messed up. Uh, should we order more shirts in the future, which I think we need to, uh, to make sure the spelling is correct, we will not be using uh, that company. But I do appreciate everybody who came out. It was a great event. Um, you know, it shows that no matter what, past, present, future, Dearborn Heights Police and Fire, we're all a family, we always will be. We stick together. So I want to get that Justice Center fixed up out front because it looks terrible with the weeds. Uh, it cannot be watered unless someone goes out there and handles it that no one has time for. And uh, it's time to uh, start respecting our first responders. So thank you, everyone, very much. And Denise, I'm very sorry that if you got any flak from this, um, you did not deserve this, and you were very gracious to step up to the plate per se and pay for the shirts. Thank you.
That's amazing. Denise, uh, I will just say a few words. That is absolutely amazing. Uh, if you guys know anything about uh, our honorable Councilwoman Minowski Maxwell, she likes to really stay under the radar when she does her services. She doesn't do it for any type of recognition, she does it from the purity of her heart. And that's why her and I have such a great relationship, and I want you to know that I appreciate you and uh, always putting public service first, never wanting it for the attention. I I love that about you.
Yeah, I just want to say, before the event, I spoke with Barb, and she was under a time restriction and didn't know how she was going to pay for the shirts. So I told her I would pay for them so she could concentrate on moving forward with other things necessary for the baseball game. What happened is I picked up the shirts um, from Deanna, the owner. She put the clothesbox in the back of my car. I delivered the box to Barb, who just distributed it to the police and fire department. At no time did either one of us feel it was necessary to check the shirts for spelling errors. This business has printed shirts for this event in the past, and especially with a Polish last name, I know what it's like to have it spelled wrong. And so, you know, I would never have done that. I I never even, I even put on a shirt that had wrong spelling on it, not even realizing it until somebody pointed it out to me.
Yeah.
Because I just didn't think
It's okay, I think the intention was pure and and the, you know, I think everybody understood the message though, and you know, you were being courageous for going out there and actually keeping, staying under the radar, being a good friend, being a good citizen, supporting the cause. So I I thank you, Councilwoman, for that.
Thank you.
Welcome. Councilman, once I just want to reiterate, I told her Councilwoman. Right?
I watched the tape. Yeah, you do, you do a good job.
Yeah, you put it, yeah, thank you. All right, and then we have Margaret, AKA Maggie King.
Hi, guys. Um, I just want to say
Hold on, state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. If they can't hear me.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to let everybody know and um, I started going to these city council meetings almost three years ago for the school zone city fifty. And still fighting for it, and I've had Lisa back me, everybody's backed me. But to hear what my dear friend Lisa had went through, I stand with you, Lisa, I love you, you're amazing. Nobody needs to go through that. And we are a community, and we need to stand together and do what we got to do to get our city back to being number one. I wanted to cry when I heard what you went through. Um, that's just what I have to say. I am very disappointed. So, I just wanted to send my love to you. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. King. Um, Councilman Sob said here's a quick announcement, then we're gonna hopefully adjourn before eight o'clock.
Just, I want to put on the record, uh, I had a nice meeting with our new chief, Swo. This past week, and uh, want to put this email thing to rest. I uh, that I uh, apparently said that I don't want public safety officers hired, just for the record. No email was ever sent from me. This was an email from between former HR director and our former chief. Why they did it, why it was sent, I have no idea, but that email never came from me. I just want to put that on the record.
Yeah, I I don't think you would ever do that, Councilman. I don't think that's your
We support our police and fire.
Yep, that's amazing. Any other announcements? Any other comments? Seven thirty-nine, can I get a motion to adjourn? Was this adjourned by Councilman Ahmad?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sob. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Yeah, that was a bonus. Aye, that's a Councilman, that's your councilman. The councilman was not being difficult today.
I'm disappointed for
Ah, it's very happy to see you on such a busy day.